Okay, six thirty, we'll call this meeting of the Joshua City Council to order. This is a regular meeting. Got our normal things going on. We have the horn present. So at this time, Angela's gonna lead us to the pledge of allegiance. Still right standing, she's gonna bring her invocation.
I think it's based on the city of Republicans, one nation under God. And there is all the fellow people that all back for life. But it's the thirty one thirty. One eighty minutes.
Bringing it together tonight. We ask that you watch over us as we take care of city business for we thank you for all the many gifts that you bestowed upon us. Father, watch over our first responders and and keep them safe, Lord, as they go through their day. Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you pour down upon this city. And we just ask that you continue to watch over us as we as we go in our ways. Father, thank you for all these things in Christ's name and then.
Amen.
Thank you.
Work session item. Work session item number one.
What are you doing?
An inspection relating to budget important financial statement for September twenty twenty three, Mr. Peacock.
Mayor first, before we get started, I'd like to introduce Stephen Gill. You folks, Stephen comes from us from the city of Mansfield, he is our new park manager. And will be hopefully within the park within the shape very soon. He's hit the ground running, already made some changes, already working on some things, and so I'm looking forward to that transition.
Well, good to be here. Appreciate it.
He's gonna get to take all the credit for the new parks, so.
Yeah.
Yes, you do.
So you have a report for you and I included in this month a report that we generate that kind of hits the highlights and I thought it might make things a little quicker since it's year end, there's a lot of confusing numbers there. A lot of percentages over and under and as we get the year balanced out. But some of the hot spots are city sales tax collections were a hundred and forty two thousand above what was projected. Mixed beverage tax was a little over nine thousand, franchise fees a little over twelve thousand, all above what were projected for this fiscal year, so that all turned out very well. A lot of those numbers that you see, the negative numbers, there was some movement as we go through cleanup proceeds from disposals and getting the sale of equipment where we retired some equipment, a Bobcat and a Ford pickup and it got moved back, so that that revenue has been accounted for. And then all the areas at year end that are over what was projected, you have there before you. And as as you go through and look at these, you might see some percentages that are high. But if you look at the actual number, it's very low, it's not, just because it's a it may say six hundred percent over budget, we can only be talking about fifty dollars because it's relatively small, so. But the highlights are in these first few pages. I happy to take any questions that you have as we go through this and.
Any questions, Johnny? Mike? Good report, Mike, thank you very much. Okay, item number two, discuss give direction regarding the Main Street construction engineering, including the downtown master plan additions to the scope to project, railroad quiet zones and funding sources. Again, Mr. Peacock.
So this is really to get some direction. Of course, as you know, the last bidding process, the the engineering bid for the design of the reconstruction of Main Street was given to Freeze Knets. And Steve is here tonight to answer any questions you may have about the roadway. But the question came up, our downtown master plan was approved back in two thousand and seventeen. And so there may be some of you that haven't even seen it. So before we got started, we wanted to make sure that is that still the vision for downtown or are there some changes that that you think you might like to incorporate? Do we need to look at getting this plan updated before we proceed? And then there's questions about the scope. We've had some discussion about quiet zones with the railroad and and do we want to try to put that in here? Do we want to separate that to a a separate project and just how far down we want to go? I just kind of need to get a little direction from you guys on how to move forward so we can give Steve the direction he needs to start preparing the engineering documents and get the contract done to get all that work moving forward, if that is still your desire. I will tell you that the project is partially funded depending on current values and then of course depending on moving forward, talking about if if we want to talk about street bonds and and so forth to finish that out, so. There are some ideas that we had that staff has about recommended changes to the landscape. And we can go through that fairly easy once we get to that point, but mainly just to kind of see do you guys want some time to review this master plan? Do you want to move forward with it? Do you want to look at getting updated and having them come make a presentation to you on it, kind of whatever, however you guys want to proceed, we will we will reach that for. We did, I hope to get it in front of you November, December, those are relatively slow months for us without a lot of business where we can work through that fairly quickly, if that's your desire.
And I was on the council at the time that this was better, but I do remember some of the public discussion, or maybe it was just discussions during the council meetings, whatever this was originally talked about, and I looked through it quite a bit. I mean, there wasn't anything jumping out at me that I think specifically needs to be different, I think, until you get down into the nitty gritty of it. Overall, it looks great. I am and I know Molly would really love to see the railroad quiet zones in here, but I'm curious if we've had a recent conversation about what the cost of that would actually be.
We're, well, I'm not sure that we know until we get into the particular design. We we have the criteria and we're looking at that. And we're looking at, you know, maybe that's a project we break up for another time. You know, could it be incorporated into this? It could be, but again, you know, it's it ends up being all about the expense and what can we afford to do? And and balance that with other needs that we have, you know, is this the time to decorate two or three blocks of Main Street and make it look nice, which I think we all want to get there? But are there other needs that are more pressing for us? And I think I think those are the the things that we got to get down to and I just need a little bit of direction. We can obviously get prices and get estimates and and get a a plan put together. I just, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, that this stuff is still the look that we're going for.
I like the look. That was really my only concern. I know you know, what the public's perception of it is that it's very expensive and you know, as something, as somebody who lives right by the railroad tracks, I mean, my home is directly impacted by the noise. I would not be one that's in here chafing that we spend a whole lot of money on something like that. But if there's grants or if there's, you know, depending on what the opportunities are to offset the costs, it's it's certainly worth the conversation.
We've had some conversation with Tax Dot, we've had some conversation with some other agencies that have been successful in getting quiet zones done. We've reached out to Burleson. They've got several that are fairly simple designs. And so we're kind of looking at how those look, how those would apply to us if if they would. And then just kind of going through the process, we visited with Steve about it, so it's kind of on his radar and his people are looking at it also. I just don't want to send him, I don't want to send him on wild goose chase if if we decide to maybe we want to separate that, let let's focus on Main Street now, we're worried about side streets maybe in the next phase or that's a good time.
I think that would be the logical approach here.
Where do you look at doing the quiet zones first in preparation of expanding the outdoor area and the idea of being able to be inside?
Well, I know it's it's definitely something that just just on the type A board that, you know, Molly has had conversations with people and it and it and have an impact on businesses wanting to come in to downtown, so.
That's the outdoor seating.
Right, so I mean, there's definitely value, but it it has to be weighed at the cost and I mean, even if we could get a general understanding of what what the cost is. Client zone.
And we have, we visited with their engineers and 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 some staff conversations with them to see what their processes were. Most of theirs are on a different railroad. But I think a lot of it's probably similar, so they've got some fairly simple designs that that were done that could could apply here. We're just, we're trying to work through those so that we can get kind of Steve some direction where we're trying to go and how that works out. I'm sorry.
I like the concept. So, you know, we've been working on this for a while, let's just see where we go with it.
I, well, I looked through the plan and I also looked at the percentages of people holding on particularly design. And I think I really like it. I think it's a wonderful idea and it will bring a lot of businesses and people will want to stay here and spend money here. I was kind of surprised that people didn't want to have more of a native landscaping that takes less water in the survey, is that correct? I mean, I would go with that rather than coming to spend so much.
Well, and we have some some issue or some ideas for some landscaping to do some things to make it more worse. Working with the business owners that that they help putting planter boxes in that are self watering and, you know, we've not had the greatest luck running irrigation lines everywhere. And we we've got a small staff and and cleaning out flower beds and all that stuff is difficult for us to do with so few people, so. I, quite honestly, I'm not looking at a bunch of flowers and weeded beds and all that stuff. We're looking at more of the natural nature shaped stuff that's drought tolerant and a river, Astro Turf, a black tree.
We can bring you those, we'll bring you those numbers. I'm good with master plans. I was here when it when we went over it the first time and and the ideas were really great. However, we have greater needs. And that is the the city hall and the police station that are really high on our to do list.
Right.
That being said, how is, how much, how big of a deal is it to get a quiet zone for our current situation and like like you said, in preparation for expanding downtown, kind of ahead of maybe a few places that might be hesitant to come with that. And then also I'd like to put it off until we get till till Tax Dot finishes the nine seventeen project.
Well, and I and I'll and I'll caveat that, say, Steve jumped in here if you disagree, but I I think the biggest challenge for us is going to be nine seventeen because Tax Dot, my guess is, on top of the railroad, are going to have their own set of standards and guidelines and widths and what kind of design. So I I think that is a is a that crossing is going to be an issue in and of itself. And and you're right, I don't see the need to spend a bunch of money on that crossing when in maybe sometime in our lifetime, they're going to put that underpass and I don't know if they're bothering that, but they say they're going to do it and 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 just negate that, so I I don't know if it's worth a a huge price tag. I'm just not sure, we're not far enough into it to know what that is. And am I right? Tax Dot's gonna have their own set of.
I'm just gonna say the same thing. The other two properties might be able to do the way Burleson did if it's okay with Burlington North.
Right.
But Tax Dot, probably not.
Yeah, I don't.
They'll probably want something more.
Yeah, I think they're gonna want a more more of a divided roadway, probably lash. You see, part of the problem is you widen those streets too much. Those arms are in place. If we have to start moving those, will we widen the street? That that's the money.
And and we're in that catch twenty two then, because we're looking at it.
And I I've reached out to the new area engineer here to get, kind of get that conversation started to to see, we we have their guidelines, but it's kind of like a federal book of guidelines, it's a monster to go through, so we're gonna try to get the short version through them to see just how far we want to go with it.
Well, I like the the plan and it is far enough from the railroad end of it, that that could be the, like a second stage or second phase, you know, down on this end of the street, but definitely the, well, we're gonna get one of them done away with for sure because we're gonna, the plan is to close Twelfth Street at some point. Of course, if they're blasting at nine seventeen and then six, because they have to twelve is in the middle, so you're still gonna hear it. Maybe not as much, but you're still gonna get it, so. I don't know that we'd spend any money on that one because we know we're gonna close the crossing and what up there. So it's just gonna leave us the others, but we may end up extending it down to Twenty Second Street and then Spring Valley too, because there's a distance from one to the other that you have to get. Well, I don't remember what it is, but I remember reading it. And there being some conversation that we might have to just do them all. But if it get the plan, if you want to stick with the plan, that's fine, I, we can at least get enough stuff started to get kind of get some rough estimates together to get an idea of where where we are. That'll give me a little more time to to work with them on these crossings and find out just what that's gonna gonna tell. But the nine seventeen will be that was gonna be the biggest issue.
Johnny?
I have a problem with the plan and I think the quiet zone should be investigated because we just don't know what it costs. And it's not gonna hurt a thing to investigate. It may turn out to be a great deal.
What would be if you said no, son?
Yeah.
Molly might find the money somewhere.
I'm holding your breath.
My biggest concern, we went to a lot of expense to have this this plan done. It's nineteen seventeen, or seventeen?
Yep.
So it's it's six, seven years old. The demographics have changed. Lots changed in in that amount of time. If we were to want to go in and and have it revised or revisited and checked over, what kind of expense are we talking about?
They're getting that for me. I I've reached out to them, they're gonna put that number together. I was hoping to have it today, but I didn't get it. I'm still certain I can have it for you next month.
My other concern goes along with what Mike said. We've we've got a lot of other things that I think would be a better use of our our tax dollars right now. We've got a lot of streets that need a lot more repair than than what we are able to keep up with the way it is to unify six or seven blocks. Yeah, I I just I I would be opposed to it personally for that reason. We've got other things that we need worse than a pretty firebug down there.
When you look at our street rating, there's there are definitely areas that we could make improvements and these funds could be used, so that's the the check, you know, checking, you know, to update this, keep it in in the the works and all that, I've got a problem with. But spending that money right now would be pretty tough.
Well, but I think Steve said we can do it in phases too, like it doesn't have to be all at once, but the bigger half of it would have to occur. I mean, we talked about that a little bit.
Well, what I was suggesting was that maybe we move forward with the design of the road. But in the first phase of the construction, we would just handle utilities, just the underground stuff. That's usually the thing that slows projects up. We begin with, it's either right away or utility conflicts. So if we handle those upfront, then when we get ready to actually build the road, the design will be done, the utilities will be handled. So that's.
Could be a way to break it up and spread the money out, project to project.
Well, things in design and everything and and this whole concept for people that haven't seen it would probably be a good part of the conversation when we start talking about the need for moving the city hall to the police station, this kind of plays into it and it gives people a visual you know, it it it's not just that we want a new building. There's value in moving these facilities to another location, getting these properties back to downtown.
Great. So would would we have a consensus then to go ahead and just revisit the and and kind of revise what we've got? Kind of look at that and get a presentation back in December?
Absolutely.
Everybody agree with that? Okay. Is that what you need, Mike?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item number three, discuss and receive updates on city board meetings. We've got boards going all the time, we've got all kinds of stuff going on all the time and.
May I interrupt you briefly, just if the dog didn't whiz on for our new sniffer was here? If I could get a look at our new narcotics dog.
Get worried, boy.
We'll hurt tomorrow. Well, so I hope our last K nine had some behavioral issues. Which we turned against other dogs and children, so we couldn't have that, so. We see benefit in program of having a K nine, again, we're going to want a few Ks in Johnson County, but it's a rarity for us to decide now, so. We decided to keep the program going and reached out to a K nine group down in San Antonio named Gerida Kane, and they hurt us up with a German short hair pointer. He was, has less of a affinity with young kids and seen all the, you know. He's not very aggressive, he's actually very gentle and very friendly. We could actually use him for PR work with kids in school. He is single certified now as a K nine, or in our topics, but we are gonna work with him and get him to each society as well.
What's his name?
Bassett.
Bassett.
He's bad for it.
So, how old is he?
A year and a half.
Bassett or Bosco?
Tabasco. My tobacco, how I did it.
Bosco was the word from friends we talked about the other days.
So he's still learning his environment. He's he's still a little skittish to meeting new people. But I had no problem with him other than barking in his crate. But that kind of calm them down.
Pretty handy. If you were in a grave, you'd probably holler too.
I would.
Yeah. So so where are you gonna use it? I mean, where's the paper?
Mostly traffic stops. The school calls us, you can use them in school too. So he's certified on three orders, meth cocaine and heroin. With the laws changing roughly as they are, I ain't certified on marijuana, because if they do change the law, then they'll have to retire. And I don't want him to be a a three year old dog, three and a half year old when I retire, so. With German short hair pointers, they don't have the hip dysplasia like Vernon Shepherd, so their hips are getting good. So he could work till he's ten and eleven, which is kind of depends off of all model Shepherd, that hierarchy was five and a half. I had like maybe one more year with him before their hips start getting but he is, he's still a puppy for sure. But like on that dog, there's no, there's no aggression with him. Like I said, he's telepathic between his legs because he's still learning. We are not, his toy that he gets rewarded with does not click one. I just can't get it back from him because of howl. This is easier to get out of his mouth. And my old shepherd, just being how they are, you have to fight with them to get out, but he'll he'll get back to you, but that howl for some reason, he he goes crazy for a howl.
And we we still operate the other eight agencies that they.
Correct, you might like to, the old K nine went back to the the breeder.
I think he's talking about it's another agency calling.
Yeah, we are, we just like to do the previous K nine. He's gonna be used here, you know, for our purposes, but in what areas you have first, because Officer Valerie, Officer Smith, we do that one right there. Plus, we did some work with DPS narcotics here in the county and in Flint County. We did some, we did some, they did some interdiction work with some other entities, so. We're putting the show into here. This is not a very good support.
Yeah, I was on Sunday. That was our first call out. He, well, I was actually working, so it wouldn't be a call out, but we went Sunday for our first deployment. He's still getting used to the car and stuff. I've only had him for a month. Right out of a month. When I went down to San Antonio for Pan School, Monday morning was the first time we met. I thought I was gonna get, got to the hotel because he was barking so much. He, he's had a lot of good, he does good with my wife and my kids. I have a little dog at home too, he doesn't really get let down. I don't have to keep them separate like I had to with my my shepherd. But he's good, he's just learning his environment still. It'll give us six, six to six months to a year where you start that that bond is completely set and then we'll be getting the streets rolling. He's already doing great on people's sniffs right now. He does great. Crime Copper bought me those training boxes, he'll use those. We use them every time we work. He does great on those. And then, of course, I have the training agent at the PD. So he's just a big heavy bear.
Maybe some, maybe some somehow not for a council meeting, we can hide a target in here and he can come in and demonstrate where.
If you listen closely, if it's quiet enough, you listen closely, when the sniff, he starts like a pig. And basically, he'll he'll close his mouth and sniff. But he'll start. Just knows. Awesome. He's just a big teddy.
Welcome to the forest.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Never know who's willing to touch everybody who makes it this.
Hey, chief? Month and second, please, honey. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for bringing me in to meet all of us. Okay, discuss and receive updates on city board meetings. As I was saying, we've got a lot of boards that meet on a lot of different nights, go in a lot of different directions, a lot of different projects. So we thought we'd add this time in to get an update, look at the minutes from the different places being part of the package and everything, so we can make informed decisions when we have to make decisions for the boards and everything. As you can see, from the list this month, we only had two boards that actually had meetings, which was the Animal Control Advisory Board and our Type A Economic Development. Mike is a representative on on Animal Control Advisory Board and he wasn't even at that meeting, so he can't really catch us up on what was going on. Looked like a pretty normal meeting, I'm a ton of a lot. Shelley from Type A, anything going on there we need to go about?
So Brittany McNeil from Chamber Kane and just kind of gave us an update of what is going on there. She's the interim chair chairperson. So they're still looking for a permanent person. She was optimistic that that was going to be, I don't know if you heard anything except then.
We're gonna post it next week. We just had a meeting yesterday.
But she was just talking about the plans for the activities downtown and Christmas and fall and, you know, that she, that they'd had to give us marks for vendors and stuff or something like that. And then just updates from Molly on plans and.
Dare openly or understand. Okay, so each month we'll be getting this type of information. If you happen to be on board, we expect to be asked to comment about it within a few months, so. All right, moving right along. And we'll go to updates from mayor and council members and city staff members. Did I have anything that they did this month that I talked about for the city anywhere? No updates?
Oh, on May, a Saturday, four to eight, we're gonna have a live band, probably done by Friday, it's an eighties band, Molly just seeing them before in public, that should be really good. It will be twenty five plus vendors.
Think it'll be twenty-five plus vendors, so it should be a pretty good event.
What's our pantry like we did for Christmas? Four to eight.
Yeah, they did that a long time ago. They did it at the school, we were still finding all kind of hours.
Well, we're trying to bring downtown back, because we've got some good plans in the process. Mike, you want to kind of update on the stage?
Um, sure. So uh Molly and I took a trip to uh Dallas last week and and met with the company during the parks group uh parade show and the century was there with the stage. It was like the one that we're ordering with the exception of viruses. About eight feet longer. It's very easy to operate. It's uh some of you may have seen the one Burleson has. It's 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 much lighter than that. It's the same size, same company. A lot of the same features, but it doesn't have a the hard shell cover, doesn't have, it's not nearly as heavy. So we're not, we don't need a dump truck to pull it. We can pull it without, just a regular picker. Easy to set up. It comes complete with stage lights, um, sound, portable power, ADA lifts. It's all ADA compliant, the ram skirt. It's very impressive to look at it. Takes about twenty minutes to set it up, I believe, what they're telling us, and my understanding was their delivery date passed twelve, fourteen months. Perhaps you did tell me when I spoke with them Tuesday, this that it started production on Tuesday. So I'll figure out in a few weeks and we'll reach out again and she said as the farther along with the process it got, the better they could narrow down the time. I still don't expect it to be much less than that, but you know, might be lucky and get it quicker. But it was very nice. Very impressive to see.
Do you need to add that, Mike? All right. Okay, uh, we'll move into uh the public forum, uh, presentation and recognition. I haven't gotten anybody that's wanting to speak. So we'll move on to item G, the consent agenda. Discuss, consider, and possible action on the meeting minutes since September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. City council meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions on the minutes? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
The motion that we accept the minutes as presented?
Okay, you got a motion by Shelley, seconded by Angela to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, item number two, discuss, consider, and possible action on approving develop the the development agreements. Uh, this is our standard monthly development agreement thing, so uh anybody have any questions, discussion? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Approve the development agreement.
I'm sorry. The motion by Johnny, seconded by Mike to approve the development agreements as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, moving into the regular agenda items. Discuss, consider, and possible action on accepting five percent CPI consumer price index increase as requested by Waste Connections. It's ransom.
Uh, this is just a little bit of housekeeping I have to pose. Uh, Waste Connection sent us a letter requesting a five percent uh consumer price index increase. They have not asked for one. Uh, it's been three years since they've requested. Um, like anybody else, you're seeing significant cost increases just in running the business, so uh, for a contract, they can go to five percent. Um, in the letter, they stated really it should be eight, but because of our current contract with them, they're requesting the max. Uh, a dead list, the current rates uh on the staff report, and then what the new rate would be.
But have any questions?
Will this be a uh another year contract?
No, it's not extending the current contract. The um our current five-year contract ends uh December twenty-fourth.
Okay.
So no, this does not extend.
Any other questions? I'll accept the motion.
I'm motion we accept the new rates.
That's okay.
I have a motion by Merle, seconded by Shelley to accept the new rates as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item number two, discuss the possible action on a resolution approving city Joshua investment report for the quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. This Freeman.
Good evening. We have um invested funds in the new Techstar account towards the end of August. Um, so submitted before you is the quarterly report through September thirtieth. The balance in the Techstar account, um, as of September thirtieth was three million, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents, which includes the interest earned for the quarter in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. Um, I included some charts in the report to show um, the first one shows the breakdown of the balances by fund, so um, each fund that that cash was pulled from to invest. And then the second chart shows the average interest rates for each month, so as we go along, we'll have more and more information that gets added to it. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, uh, I'll accept the motion.
Approve, present a motion to approve the city Joshua investment report for twenty twenty-three.
Also, I've got a motion by Johnny, seconded by Angela to accept the city of Joshua investment report for the quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Item number three, discuss, consider, and possible action to ratify a resolution making a nomination to serve on the Johnson County Appraisal District Board of Directors, Mr. Peacock.
This goes along with um what the council has made clear is a commitment to do everything that we can do to help reduce the burden, uh, the tax, the property tax burden on residents. And so and we're we're hoping to make uh some changes on the uh to support some changes on the appraisal district board. My my local mayor has uh met with some some people about this and I I think what we're, what our position is, is that we've we've got fifty-one votes, I believe.
Is that right, Mayor?
That's correct. Fifty-one votes, and uh the recommendation is that those votes be for Paul Jones. Uh, Paul is here tonight. He is um a known fighter for what he believes is right and for property rights. I think that he will serve our interests very well. He's not a resident of the city, but he's close. And uh, we tried to make him a resident. He didn't like it, but uh, but he uh yeah, we believe that that he will serve our interest and his very well.
I think it's also important to to note, um, we were not made aware of the uh deadline for the nominations till about three days before the deadline. And so we had to either nominate somebody or our fifty-one votes just didn't get into the the nominating process at all. We we made the decision to go ahead and uh submit Paul's name as our as somebody that we we think will be very good on the on the CAD Central Appraisal District Board. Um, what we're doing tonight is the the necessary paperwork to to make that a a a proper nomination for him to be on there. Paul, would you like to say anything?
Good evening. Thank you for your support on my uh quest to be on the Central Appraisal District Board. Uh, I think it's important to get some new people in their new blood. Uh, and one of the things that we want to accomplish there, myself and some other folks that are running for to be on the CAD board, is to kind of open up the processes that are going on there and get the public more involved in what's going on and and improve their knowledge and ours of what's going on with the CAD board. Anytime you ask anybody over there what's going on or any specific questions, they want to throw it to Austin. Say, oh, this is Austin. Everything is Austin related, including they claim how your property taxes are set, so it's not necessarily true. That's just a a uh a typical response you will get from them. Uh, our quest is to make that more part of our, that's our our sense of duty is that yes, I am a proponent for lower taxes. As you all know, some cities like that, some don't. We all know there are necessities tied to that. And I have nothing against taxation, but hover taxation, no, nothing. So thank you for your support. I appreciate it. And uh, is this just the nomination tonight or?
Like the actual
Okay. December fifteenth.
December fifteenth, which is before our December council meetings will actually be be voting in in November.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good luck, Paul.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, the Central Appraisal District Board, uh, their primary duty is to set the budget, provide a working space for the chief appraiser. And the chief appraiser works for them. Um, depending on whose interpretation of state law you you go to. Um, the CAD board has a lot more authority and power than than what most people think. The other thing about the CAD board is we've got people deciding what the value of our homes are that are basically appointed by the taxing entities.
Nothing like that is.
Yeah, no, 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 nothing looks suspicious about that at all. But we believe this, that regular citizens, not people who have relationships with the taxing entity, should actually be on that board. So, you know, I know Paul, uh, when he gets a hold of a bone, he don't let go of it. And and I I know he's gonna serve us well on the board and uh, I'm I'm proud to say that I'm glad we're nominating you and some of the other people that are getting nominated. It's it's really, it's gonna be interesting how it goes.
Same with the thing, I don't know.
Yeah. The other thing is, uh, in the legislature uh this year, when we have the vote in November about the property tax relief bill that they say is a relief bill, um, there'll be a vote in there also as well as to make every CAD board have a certain number of elected people on there that will be in general election, not appointed elections. So so the process is coming about. It's it's a slow process. But I don't know a person there here whose appraisal made any sense this last year. And when you ask them questions, all you get is the runaround. So we we need people on that board to do what they need to do.
And so when you go through and I think that's the day, you know, walking through and and it's not friends, there's nothing on the state. And part of all of this, the CAD does, it is saying fire those people that are the art board. You know, you want people who are willing to talk to you, if you like your human, not, you know. It's a messed up deal.
It's it's pretty, pretty weird that we've got people making those kind of decisions that are elected by.
Way across the state.
Pardon?
It's that way across the state.
Yeah, it is. Uh, and it was awful funny that this year the every county in the state did exactly the same thing with their their property tax rates. So or or values, it's, you know, it wasn't coordinated or anything. I'm off my soapbox now. Let's get back to the to the meeting here. So um, we have a a uh resolution. Um, and I'm open for a motion.
Motion that we approve the resolution to not make all those.
Okay, so I've got Mike uh, making a motion and Johnny seconding to approve the resul- to ratify a resolution, uh, making nomination to serve on the CAD board. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. They serve us well, Paul. Okay, so next item will be our staff reports. Anybody have any questions about any of the staff reports?
Mayor, some information to be off. Uh, unfortunately, I guess the fire department is still tied up, but uh, I hate to steal the chief's thunder, but I did want to let you know that the engine that has been on order for two years is finished. To chief, and I believe uh, Captain Hale will be flying down to Orlando in first part of November to do the walkthrough, the final inspection, make sure that it's all right and ready to go. And if that occurs, then uh, we expect it to be delivered hopefully before Thanksgiving.
Is there a captain there?
Has been for a long time. And then also once, I'm sorry.
I thought we only have one captain yet. I'll accept the nomination.
I'm sure they're not gonna have any control. Those those two were the primary ones that that did specs and put it together, so they'll go down there and sell off on it. And then once that gets here and in service, uh, engine two and engine three, the old, the two oldest ones you have, uh, will be stripped and one of them's actually already listed for sale. They're they're getting to be muddy pits, and so we're gonna, once that second one gets here, then.
That big uh armored vehicle looking thing come in yet?
Yes, a rescue truck.
Rescue, yes. Yeah, they were gonna bring it tonight, but.
That's what I was, that's what I thought you brought.
I think they're out in it.
They're out in it.
Yeah, it's it's, it may show up before we leave, but.
It is awesome.
Yes, it's.
That was a good uh it's a good deal.
Good deals.
And do a lot of good things with the fire department.
And uh, they had it at the um night out, uh, National Night Out, the YNC apartment lot. And uh, it was a sharp vehicle. Very sharp vehicle.
I expect they'll have it out here Saturday to, you know, get a chance to see it tonight, try to see it.
And um the city secretary revised how he's doing a report. Instead of keeping things going as a running commentary, she's gonna try to shorten that, make her workload a little bit less on on this meeting. Uh, she was giving us a lot of information. Uh, this will be a little more concise, easy for us to read, so uh, are there any future agenda items anybody would like to request? Yep. All right. Well, in that case, at seven eighteen, we're adjourned.
Good deal.